I think we've got a few gears.
Good evening, welcome to the December 10th meeting of the Alachua County School Board. Thank you all for being here and those who are tuning in online or on Channel 12, thank you as well. Let's rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and now I would like to recognize Ms. Jackie Johnson, who has a presentation for our One Mill Advocacy Committee, who helped get our One Mill for Schools passed again this year. We appreciate them all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rockwell, Dr. Patton, board members, ladies and gentlemen. It is my great pleasure tonight to recognize the members of the 2024 One Mill for Schools Advocacy Team, also known as Citizens for Strong Schools. In the months leading up to Election Day, this group of dedicated volunteers developed and implemented an awareness campaign to help local voters understand the importance of the One Mill for our students, for our schools, and really for our community. Their efforts were more important than ever this year because, as you know, there is a state law that was passed a couple of years ago that strictly limits what school districts and other governmental entities can do to educate the public about ballot initiatives like the One Mill. With a tight timeframe and a limited budget, this committee was able to reconstitute Citizens for Strong Schools and get state approval to operate it, raise funds, organize a launch party, create a website and social media accounts, create and implement a marketing plan that included a TV spot, news releases, social media ads, information cards, T-shirts, buttons, and other strategies, create and distribute campaign signs, and organize sign-waving volunteers, solicit endorsements from local organizations, arrange speaking engagements and community tabling events, organize direct communications to voters, and much, much more. And obviously, their efforts paid off in a very big way. The One Mill passed with the approval of 76% of Alachua County voters, the second highest total in the five One Mill campaigns. As a result, absolutely, that's worthy of a round of applause. As a result, Alachua County Public School students will continue to have access to the vital people and programs supported by the One Mill, including art and music programs in kindergarten through 12th grade, career tech programs, academic magnets, counselors, librarians, school nurses, and classroom technology. In the months leading up to the campaign, I spoke to many current and former students who have benefited from One Mill-funded programs, and we highlighted several of them in a series of videos, and we had them speak at a couple of our community events. If you had a chance to see any of those videos, and I know many of you did, you know what a positive and lasting impact these programs continue to have on the lives of Alachua County's young people. At this time, I'm going to call up each of the members of the One Mill Advocacy Committee to accept our appreciation, beginning with Mark Starr, Chairman of Citizens for Strong Schools. As most of you know, Mark is the President and CEO of Florida Credit Union, one of this district's longest-standing and most generous partners. In fact, when Kelly Costomo and I approached him about serving as Chair, we had just wrapped up the annual volunteer breakfast, which was, of course, sponsored by Florida Credit Union. Not only did Mark say yes to being Chair, but he jumped wholeheartedly into the role. Not only did he lend his name and professional reputation to the One Mill, but he also dedicated his time and expertise and that of several members of his leadership team to the campaign, along with a significant financial contribution. Mark, thank you for once again stepping up to support our schools and our students. Thank you so much. I'm going to recognize the rest of the members in alphabetical order, beginning with Danny Areola. Danny is one of the members of Mark's Florida Credit Union team. He served as Treasurer for Citizens for Strong Schools. Now, those of you who have run for office know what a very complex and critical role that is, and Danny was amazingly effective. Danny, thank you very, very much. Carla Dix, also from Florida Credit Union. She was the committee's organizer. She kept notes at all of our meetings, she scheduled meetings, she sent out reminders. Carla was the one who kept us all on track, because otherwise, we'd have been all over the place. Carla, thank you so much. Beatrice Cherry. Beatrice is also with Florida Credit Union. She was our marketing guru. She handled the design of all of our materials, she attended events, she handled our TV and media outreach, which again, was absolutely critical this time around, among many, many other roles. Beatrice, thank you so much, appreciate it. Brian Eastman. Brian volunteered his time to set up the campaign website on a very, very short timeframe. He also worked on our social media ads, and he provided much-needed expertise to the campaign, based on, obviously, his extensive knowledge of political campaigns and his work in 2018 on the Half-Cent for Schools Committee. Brian, thank you so much. Tyler Forrest. Tyler brought in several key endorsements from groups like the League of Women Voters, and also did a significant amount of outreach in the community with the many contacts he has here in Alachua County. Tyler, thank you very much. Bill Goodman. I'm sure many of you recognize Bill. He worked in this district as a counselor and as the head of our Guidance Department for many years. Bill used his extensive network of contacts to generate support for the One Mill. He could also be found during early voting waving a campaign sign in front of the Milhopper Library brand. Megan Hendricks. Megan is the immediate past President of the Alachua County Council of PTAs, and she played a significant role in the campaign. She developed and maintained the campaign's social media sites, which obviously nowadays are absolutely critical. She organized the launch party, which many of you attended. She was the liaison to parents and other voters. She attended special events and came up with many, many strategies for getting the word out about the One Mill. Megan, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Kelly Costomo. You know Kelly is our supervisor of volunteers and business partners, but during the campaign, she volunteered her time outside of work to do basically anything she was asked, from manning a table at community events, to putting out campaign signs, sometimes late into the evening, troubleshooting, you name it, Kelly was willing to do it. Kelly has become sort of my alter ego. Kelly, thank you so much. Karen McCann. And Karen is sporting one of our T-shirts, look at that. The past President of ACEA, Karen is a veteran of several One Mill campaigns, and of course, is very active in the community. She helped generate support from various local groups and also pitched in on the ground, in the ground, in many, many ways. Karen, thank you so much. Shannon Ritter. Shannon is the District's Director of Career Tech Education, but she also contributed her time outside of work to support the campaign. That included helping us identify and reach out to past and current students who were featured on the campaign's social media pages, and those were very powerful messages that came from those current and former students. Shannon, thank you so much. And of course, Carmen Ward, current ACEA President. Carmen was instrumental in getting much-needed contributions and endorsements for the One Mill. She was our liaison to district employees, she organized direct communications to voters, and supported the campaign in many other ways. Carmen, thank you so much. Two out of our 14 committee members could not be here tonight, but I did want to recognize them as well. First is Mark McGriff. Some of you may know that Mark was the first-ever Chair of Citizens for Strong Schools back in 2008, when we first went out to voters for the One Mill for Schools. He also served as Chair of that committee in 2012, 2016, and 2020. Mark's efforts during those earlier campaigns were the foundation for this year's success, so please let's give him a round of applause. And finally, I want to recognize Brian Moses. Brian is another member of Florida Credit Union's leadership team. He was the one who got Citizens for Strong Schools operational again after four years, which meant taking care of all the state and federal requirements. He was also the group's chief fundraiser, another critical role for any campaign, and he was our liaison to the Gainesville Area Chamber of Commerce and the other business groups who endorsed the One Mill, which of course lent a lot of credibility for a lot of voters who were interested, or who were wondering whether or not they should support this campaign. So again, we want to recognize Brian. On behalf of Alachua County Public Schools, I want to thank all of you from the bottom of my heart, and we spent an awful lot of time together over the past few months, got to know each other very well. I want to thank you for the contribution of your time, your talents, and your resources to the One Mill, and most importantly, to the students, staff, and families of Alachua County. Thank you so much. And at this time, I'd like to ask all of you to gather up in front. We're going to take a picture of you with the school board.
Ms. Johnson is definitely going to be in the picture, because she deserves recognition along with everyone else for this work. Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson, for organizing that presentation. We certainly have a who's who of district superstars, union superstars, and community superstars who were on this One Mill Committee, and we are so appreciative, but I would be remiss if I did not recognize Ms. Jackie Johnson's own contributions. She also worked... She also worked a tremendous number of hours outside of her workday to help make all of this possible. She even took leave days at times to be able to make this possible, which you all know, we hold on to our leave days, that's important stuff. So being willing to take that time to support our One Mill, and then to give the recognition to everyone else, thank you so much, Jackie. And I know, before you all leave, some of the other board members would also like to express their appreciation. Ms. Sirdan?
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell, and to the committee. I'm glad you all stopped before you left. I wanted to personally thank each of y'all. I've had the occasion to speak with a couple of y'all before today, but this, the Mill is highly, as you all know, very important to our school district. And in this day and age, and where public education in Florida has seen its challenges and its attacks on it, on, from all fronts, finance is no different. Jackie failed to mention that not only did the law change in how we're able to now advocate, and the resources that the district can use, but now the taxes now have to be shared, and it goes a little bit thinner, because we have to share it now with charters. And so, the district now does have to try to adjust in how it is, we'll use funds going forward, because now we don't have the whole assessment ourselves. But it is really critical to the operation of our organization, and I really appreciate the investment of your time and your financial resources in getting the assessment passed. It does, will, it will yield benefits going forward, and so, thank you all, each of you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Mr. Vu.
I'm going to say a lot of what member Sirdan said as well, but just thank you all. It's really heartening to know that there are so many people here that are passionate about supporting public education in Alachua County, and not just that, but that the voters of Alachua County believed enough enough to renew the tax, and honestly, at a, at a percentage and a level I was not expecting. And that, to me, just, again, I feel like there's not a level of gratitude I can truly put out there, and especially just seeing how our families were willing to continue to give us more money, you mean, not just to put it in those plain terms, in a time of high inflation, when we have insurance rates going crazy in the state of Florida, that they still believed in public education enough to trust us with those dollars. I just want you all to know that it is a responsibility, I'm sure we all feel. We all know how hard everyone works, and we want to do our best to honor that. So just thank you.
Ms. Abbott.
I just wanted to say that some of you, I know, I know, and I know that in addition to this, you're involved in a lot of other things in the community that makes our community a better place. So you're not only working on this, but there are other projects that, that make this a better place for all of us. So thank you so much.
Dr. McNeely.
Thank you so very much. And I'm saying that slowly, because I want you to take it in, and take it in again. It means so much when we have folk who are willing to do what you have done. And I know you've inspired so many others in our community, and I hope next year, as we get together again, the whole auditorium will be full. But thank you ever so much for every single moment of the time that you have given. We appreciate you.
Dr. Patton.
And being new, I still want to say thank you. Thank you on behalf of the kids, the staff, the schools, the community, because those funds will make an enormous difference, and it's great to hear about it, but it's greater to put faces with names that I've heard. So thank you so much for everything, and thank you for being here tonight so that we could recognize you and say thank you.
Thank you again. And now, on to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? Moved by Ms. Sirdan, and did I hear Dr. McNeely as well? So we'll say seconded by Dr. McNeely. Are there any changes or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Onto the approval of the School Board Annual Organizational Meeting Minutes from November 19th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Mr. Vu, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. McNeely. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Any comment? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Approval of the annual meeting of the Alachua County School Board Leasing Corporation Minutes for November 19th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Sirdan, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vu. Is there any discussion or comment? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Onto approval of the regular School Board Meeting Minutes from December 2nd, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Sirdan, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Abbott. Is there any discussion or comment? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Onto Board Member Superintendent Announcements. I'd like to start with Dr. Patton. I believe she has a special presentation for us this evening.
Do, we do. So, right before I get to that, I just want to say again, thank you to the so many people that have reached out to me, and I want to again, thank you to the five board members in having multiple conversations, the amount of some of the history that you've provided for me, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your time. Also, had an interesting opportunity to see our, some of our schools that have the state assisting with us, and how we're doing a wonderful job in moving those kids along, and also getting, just to take a tour of our transportation center, our food services facilities, our IT and teacher support over at Fernside with the ESE crew, and our mental health. And what a special day it was Saturday, meeting not only people in our community, but being part of the parade here in Gainesville, and just how many thousands of people are out. And I understand that was just restarted last year from 30 years ago. Certainly want to thank our staff that put together an incredible float, and to honor our Teachers of the Year, the Employee of the Year, and have them centered, and to many of our board members that either walked along and ran back and up and down to get more things to throw out, or sat along there. And also, another amazing group of people here is the Children's Trust, so had the opportunity to join Ms. Sirdan yesterday to meet those folks, and then just to say that another great group, our principals I met with today, and tomorrow, the assistant principals. And on that note of principals, have a special presentation for one of our outstanding superstars, and that is Mr. Kelly Armstrong that joins us tonight. He is the Challenger Learning Center from Tallahassee, that they celebrate educators that, who support STEAM, science, technology, education, I'm sorry, engineering, arts, and math opportunities. And they had a new award just last year, named the Bill Montford Administrator of the Year, and that's, was first awarded last year, and the second award is this year's recipient, to our own, Mr. Kelly Armstrong, who's the principal of Santa Fe High School. He was selected, and as a part of his selection, he gets to choose a school that'll get a fully funded trip to the Challenger Learning Center, courtesy of the Florida School, Florida Association of School Administrators, that we know as FASSA. And a fun fact about Mr. Armstrong, now, again, who gave this, he worked at the Challenger Learning Center when he attended FSU. So kind of funny how things come around full circle, and it wasn't a requirement to have done that, but it is my privilege and honor to recognize Mr. Armstrong for your exceptional leadership in STEAM education and his dedication to the Alachua County Public School. So thank you and congratulations. Thanks again for joining us. And so tonight, I'm also pleased to share with the board and the community information about some other positive developments in the district, just all since our last meeting, but rather talking about them. I thought it would be more interesting for you to actually see them, so we've prepared a short video to highlight just a few of the exciting things happening in Alachua County Public Schools. So we plan to make, highlight videos like this as part of our future School Board meetings. We'll also be posting them on our district YouTube page, so... We'll also be posting them on our district YouTube page. So anyone can learn more about the many positive activities and achievements. And again, I know you keep hearing this name, but I want to thank Jackie Johnson and her team that I only mentioned this to them yesterday. So they had a long time to get to put that together. But thank you to you and your team for doing that. And I appreciate it very much. Thank you, our chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Patton. Does anyone have announcements? Dr. McNeely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have an announcement except to say to Mr. Stanley, Mrs. Johnson, Kelly, Costamo, what a treat that we received once again to be on that huge float representing the Alachua County Public Schools. I think our float, am I just a little prejudiced? But it was the best. And for, I don't know if Mr. Stanley is listening in tonight, but we cannot do it without him. So let's give him a huge round of applause. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week was, we were at our 79th Joint Annual Conference for the School Board Association and the Superintendent Associations. Myself, Dr. Rockwell and Dr. Patton were there. We missed you, Dr. McNeely and Ms. Abbott. Lots of informative, or several informative breakout sessions and camaraderie during the socials in the evening and some encouraging keynote speakers. Game changers was this year's theme. The importance of teamwork, having a unified vision, working together as a team, moving in the same direction were some of my key takeaways. So the conference is always a lot of fun to get together to see our colleagues from around the state. I want to also take this time to congratulate several of our high school football teams. And you all are probably tired to hear me say this, but I say it every year. Many people play that are athletes. They play their entire athletic careers and they never get to play for a championship. So what we have here in our county is real special. And that Hawthorne High School has made five. They've been in the state championship game five years in a row. And there's some people, I'm telling you, they never get to do this. Never. They play from little league, high school, college, and even professionally, and they never get to play for a championship. So what they've done out there in the eastern part of our county is really special. And it's, and it's skill, love, determination, all of those things are all in one. So I want to congratulate them. They didn't win this year, but just to be there. A lot of people can't say they've been there. So congratulations to Ghost Jingling and those players. I'd also like to give a congratulations to Newberry High School. They were, they were in the postseason, went deep, lost down in Brevara County in a game that was, they fought hard as well as to behold, they played home here and they weren't successful. But they all had very good seasons. But, and so the behold is knocking on the door. I'm looking for them to break through it next year. I'd also like to say, which I failed to say when I, earlier, is thank the voters as Mr. Vu did. Thank them not just for the, for the meal, but for the absent sales tax. We, we live in a special community and I've had, I've said my criticisms of our county, our school district. And, but I really want to just give a shout out. Where we live also is real special. Dr. Patton can tell you guys, there're not, there're not many districts that have both assessments. We're one of the few. I mean, it's a handful. I could, I could probably tell you it's, it's less than 15 of us.
And Children's Trust.
And Children's Trust.
That makes it a trifecta.
We have all three. So we live in a real special community that is really, is genuinely concerned about the wellbeing and is willing to, they vote to tax themselves to do better. And that is really the reason why I have the zeal for us to really do our very best with those dollars. Because people don't have to do that. The legislature really controls the purse string for the education system. And our community has given us a vote of confidence by voting to provide us additional funds. So we owe it to the citizens, but more importantly, to the students of this county to do our very best by, by those dollars. So those are the things that I had. I'm elated that we had the outcome that we had. And I'm glad that we thank the, those folks who, who ran the campaign. Campaigns are hard. And issue campaign is no less, no easier than a political campaign for, for getting a seat. And Dr. McNeely has already thanked our float committee. And I'd just like to extend my thanks to them again. It was a fun afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sirdan. Mr. Delaney?
Just a reminder about our public hearing at 6:30.
Okay, we will move to our time certain public hearing now and we will come back to complete any announcements.
Action item one. I apologize. I'm sorry. I misread it. I'm sorry, everybody. That's on me. Should have had my glasses. The public hearing's in January. I'm so sorry.
Okay. I was like, I'm, I'm a little surprised here, but all right. All right. So moving, moving back to board member announcements. Does anyone else have an announcement? Dr. McNeely, do you have anything else? I'm going to echo what Ms. Sirdan had. I had the joy of attending the FSBA Joint Annual Conference along with FADS. Unfortunately, I got sick and had to leave a day early and then missed the parade. But the, what I was able to attend of the conference was as usual excellent. And I am very thankful that FSBA puts that on for our education every year. Moving on to citizen input, Mr. Ray Griffin.
Thank you. Did not know that. Dr. Patton and Dr. Rockwell and board members, thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Ray Griffin and I'm with Fringe Benefits Management Company. And I'm not here for a business meeting or anything. I'm here because we are a sponsor of FADS, FSBA, FASSA, and many other organizations through our company. We do provide medical and dental and vision programs near all the ancillary products. But I am also a Madison County resident. And each year that I get to the FSA conference, if our team is in the state playoffs in any form or fashion, I challenge the school district we might be playing to a little side bit. And no matter if we win or lose, Madison wins or loses, I will always bring something special from Madison County to the school board and to the coach of the team that we happen to play. We have a lady in our county that's passed away now, but her name was Mrs. Leslie. And she made the best 10-layer chocolate cakes ever. And her nieces have continued this tradition on. And so I have brought two cakes as a token to Ms. Sirdan and Ms. Rockwell when I saw them at the conference of the spirit of competition between Madison and Hawthorne. My wife is a career 35-plus-year teacher in Madison. We have been there. We've raised our kids in the Madison County Public School. They have done well. And I want to recognize the hard work that the Hawthorne Hornets and the Madison County Cowboys have put into this. The boys and also the cheerleaders, the band, everybody that participated were very, very well-mannered. It was a great game. But the true grit and determination from those young men on the football field can go far in life. And I've seen it my entire life where these young men and women go on to do great things, but they started it at the school level. And I just wanted to thank this board and thank the Hawthorne Hornets and Coach Ingram for what they've done. It's just a token of our appreciation, not only from my company, but from me personally and our residents in Madison. So thank you. And I will leave these with you, Ms. Sirdan. I usually leave one with the school board and then if you'll take the one to Coach Ingram for me. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Griffin. It's, it's always a pleasure seeing you at the conference. And this is very generous and very kind. Thank you. All right. Our next citizen is Ms. Ann Rush.
Is the speaker on? Thank you, Madam Chair. Ann Rush for the record. One year ago, I did not attend these meetings. I was a parent whose child was happily attending one of the district's schools. We loved our school and teachers and trusted the board and the district that they were managing things and things were functioning well. That changed last year when former Superintendent Shane Andrew dismantled the 20-plus-year Williams Elementary Magnet Program without notice to the school, staff, parents, or students. And as I was to become later aware through public records requests, with only 30 minutes advance notice to the board itself, before issuing a public press, press release dismantling the 20-plus-year program. I began attending these meetings because of those baffling actions. In expressing my concerns at these meetings, it was immediately brought to my attention by the prior board chair that the board's policy as to civility and public comment forbade mentioning names in any capacity, though that was not uniformly enforced. I had to tailor my criticism and questions to fit this bizarre policy that forbade the mentioning of the names. At the time, to ensure that my concerns were heard at all, I allowed my comments to be so censored and witnessed the same of many others making public comment. I later voiced my concern to those affiliated with the district as to how the district imposed such a policy at all, censoring public comment with no identified compelling government interest. This policy ensured a lack of accountability by not allowing bad actors to be identified and was not evenly applied as numerous commentators were allowed to state names when the former board chair agreed with their comments or they were not critical of board members or district staff. Before I could receive a response, the courts instead gave an answer. In a case out of Broward County, the courts declared that an almost identical policy used by that school board unconstitutionally violated the First Amendment rights of members of the public coming before the board to air their grievances and expect redress to their concerns. This board has yet to adopt a new policy or clarify to the public that the formerly required process no longer applies. I've continued to witness speakers censor their statements as they mistakenly, mistakenly believe that it does still apply. I call on the board to issue a public apology for the prior censorship its former board chair imposed upon the public. I also want to specifically call attention to the behavior of one board member. During one of the October meetings, during citizen comment, where the citizen was following the now known to be unlawful no names policy, but was openly criticizing Dr. McNeely and Ms. McGraw, Dr. McNeely drew her finger across her throat, signaling to the district employee managing calls to forcibly cut off the caller, after which the call was abruptly dropped. Not only was this a violation of board policy, which under the policy 123, standards of boardmanship requires that board members listen responsibly to the community, but it was a flagrant violation of the First Amendment, which ironically, Dr. McNeely would come back in less than a month later to square to uphold.
Ms. Rush. Do we have any other public comment or callers?
Madam Chair, could I just make one extra comment? I forgot.
Absolutely.
We just wanted to let the Lancaster family that lost their son this past weekend, just due to a very tragic accident. We all think we might have problems in life, but losing a child is about as hard as it gets. This young man was a senior this year at Newberry, but had been three years at another high school. So I think the kids, it was very, you know, difficult for that. And I also want to thank our staff that responded at both schools to be there for any of the students. So to that Lancaster family, just letting them know that we're keeping them in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. It was definitely a tragedy that, that shook our district. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I thought this, I'm sorry. I thought, thought that Superintendent Patton would do that. One move with, um, approved the, uh, the consent agenda as presented.
Sorry, Dr. Patton.
So normally, I was waiting on the superintendent to make the motion. Normally, they make the recommendation.
Oh, to approve the consent?
That's okay. That's okay.
Okay, got it.
I was waiting to, but.
How about a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I did it already.
Okay, you did it.
Just the recommendation.
Got it. But we usually do that.
You usually make the recommendation.
Okay, thanks. See, it's still learning.
All right. So we had a motion from Ms. Sirdan, a second from Dr. McNeely. Is there any discussion or questions for the consent agenda? Mr. Vu.
Yes, I did have one question. It's about item three on the consent agenda. It's the bid and renewal for FLVS. And I see that it's for the 24-25 school year, which is currently ongoing. And my question is, why are we approving a bid and requisition now when we, it's already ongoing?
Gabby, thanks.
Are you referring to the virtual, the Florida Virtual School?
Yes.
It is being presented now because the requisition was recently put into the system. So that's why it's being brought now for approval.
Is this going to be the normal timeline for programs such as this to where we're approving them mid-year for something that's ongoing?
So let me just jump in. So the answer to that question is no. So I think what you'll see is, and I'm a person that if something's not right, it's not right. But what we do is we fix it. So this item will come back at the right time next year, which should be earlier into the fall.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Moving on to action item one. And that is, sorry, that is Mr. Spilius with the first reading of the amendments to policy 2522.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we are here for first reading on the amendments to policy 2522, challenges to adoption or use of instructional library reading list materials. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the amendments to policy 2522, challenges to adoption or use of instructional library reading list materials as presented for advertising and schedule a public hearing on January 21st, 2025 at 6:30 PM. The proposed amendments to policy 2522 are shown in the attached statement of purpose and effect, which outlines the reasons for the proposed amendments. And the amendments are shown in the attached policy.
Thank you, Mr. Spilius. Do we have a motion to approve the amendments to policy 2522 for advertisement? Moved by Mr. Vu. Second by Ms. Sirdan. And Ms. Sirdan, you have questions?
Yes, I did. I went back and look, this came before May 21st. And when I was looking through, I thought that we had asked for that representative to be taken out. Am I mistaken? Like when I went back and I thought that was one of the things that we had asked to come out because we didn't want just folks sending a representative, you know, this to kind of be abused for that. And I looked at another Neola district and they don't have that in there. So I think maybe we just have that it is parent or resident of our city or whatever, instead of that personal representative.
We'll take it out.
That D, I, Adam D, yeah.
Thank you.
And then on page three, at the top of page three, so I guess it'd be to the district level review. That second paragraph, I'm wondering if there is a conflict where it starts with meetings. That second paragraph, I'm wondering if there is a conflict where it starts with meetings, meetings of the review committee, blah, 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 and it ends that they can submit, may submit evidence to the committee. But in the paragraph preceding that, it says the objectioner is struck through, that you're not able to submit information. Is that a conflict?
Okay, where are you looking at right now?
At the top of page three.
The top of page three.
It says the objectioner, and then is further permitted to, that's...
Right, so the objector may...
You know what, I'm sorry, I read it wrong. I read it wrong. That's my bad. So we're gonna let folks just submit additional information even after their initial objection. They'll get submitted during the hearing process.
So the objector initially may provide evidence to the review committee to consider during the review. Right. So that's the top of page three. And then the next provision that you thought may be in conflict is which one?
I thought it was the second part, the second paragraph, the one that follows that. But it's not a conflict. We're saying that they can submit, continue to submit information, so.
Right, I don't believe that's a conflict, no.
Yeah, I read it wrong, okay. And then, I, are we eliminating the hearing officer for this?
So this proposed policy will eliminate the hearing officer for library, any non-instructional materials. Instructional materials, the statute requires a hearing officer, and we're not touching that.
Okay. All right, those are, and then what I don't see is, we had asked for something to be added to this, to this policy so that the items that were removed previously under the old guidance would be reconsidered. And then there were also some items that were removed by principles that didn't follow the policy, and I'm not sure if those, I haven't gotten, whether or not those have been re-reviewed and reestablished or not. So, those are my questions.
I can speak to that. We do have a district library advisory council meeting scheduled for February 13, where we will go back and review seven of the nine items that were, that were removed, that did not go to the board for final recommendation. And that does include the ones that were removed by principals.
Is there a reason why the other two, are the other two were deemed to be personnel?
Well, because the board had issued a final order, and so on two, on the two that came to the board, so we weren't sure if those would be included in this additional review. We can certainly add them, but because a final order had already been issued, we didn't know if we could unfinal the order or not.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Vu, thank you, Mrs. Spilius, that's what I...
Thank you, Ms. Sirdan. Does anyone else have a question? Okay, I had a few, and I met with Dr. Patton about these already, so I know Mr. Spilius is aware of them, and some of them overlap with what Ms. Sirdan mentioned. My first concern was in 2B. We were changing a district-level media specialist to the district-level media specialist, I assume because we only have one, Ms. Vuval, and she is the one and only and irreplaceable, and we appreciate her so much, but she is still a human being who has emergencies or gets sick, and I wanted to make sure that there was wiggle room that if she's unavailable to attend a meeting, the district can designate someone else to attend that.
Since I met with you, I also found something else out. I actually spoke with Mr. Delaney and wanted, because it's a little unusual for me to have two attorneys, yours, ours, and theirs, as they work so well together, but he shared with me something very interesting. So, Mr. Delaney, would you mind sharing that?
I don't mind, and that doesn't need to change the suggestion from Dr. Rockwell. Neola, for some districts, tries to handle this issue of having a person or their designee to streamline the policy overall, because we know they get bigger every year. There's a drafting convention where in some districts, a capital D means the superintendent or their designee just kind of automatically built into the system. That's something we can take a closer look at, just to streamline the policy itself. But in the interim, I think it'd be a great idea to just put or the designee, as you suggested here, and we can try to...
As we move forward, we kind of thought we could do that moving forward, but we kind of like the designee anyway. It was a given that if someone's not here, it's a designee, but I like your suggestion, Dr. Rockwell, about that idea that we'll just put it in there for now. But moving forward, we can look at that differently, so thank you.
Thank you. One of my other concerns was what Ms. Sirdan already brought up about the objector being able to have a designee. Again, we had raised these concerns back in the spring, that allowing a designee might allow objectors to get around the limit, that a citizen who does not have a child with access to the materials can only make one objection a month. So, you know, I could make an objection and Mr. Vu, who doesn't have children, could come and present, but it's really his objection, not mine. So we do want to avoid that situation, so I concur with removing that, and I heard that that is probably going to happen. And then the final thing was, there was the addition of the statement, the decision of the board will be final. And I, like Ms. Sirdan, wanted to make sure that in the case where our policy changes due to state statutes changing or Board of Education rules changing, or for instance, we had the large settlement where the state very clearly explained some of the more vague parts of the Parents' Rights in Education Act, which impacts how some of our past book reviews might go today if, as compared to how they went before that settlement. So I want to make sure that we can add to that, the decision of the board will be final unless the board decides to reevaluate based on changes to statute, Board of Education rules, other state guidance. I think we have two of the books that we reviewed last week, we actually were able to send them back to the committee before making that final decision because the updated state guidance had come out before, like, days, days before we had the board meeting with that as an action item. So we were able to postpone those two items and have the committee reevaluate them. And I think that we have a couple of other items that the board did vote on, but that we would probably, the committee would probably make a different decision based on that updated guidance. So I think it's important that...
So, Ms. Vuval, would you mind kind of sharing with them what we kind of talked about, what might be good language to consider?
Right, we did ask that in the policy, if a final order had been made, that the board, if the board requests that we go back and reconsider those decisions, that we could do that, but it would require a request from the board to do if a final order had been issued.
So we kind of think we could try something like this, see what you think. However, as to be, the decision of the board shall be final. However, the board may at any time request that a book which had a final order entered be considered by the library, the district library advisory committee if the material was reviewed under outdated or inappropriate policies or procedures, which I think is what you're getting at. And then that would also, at your request, as you talked tonight, bring those two books back.
Yeah, that...
Does that sound to me?
Mr. Spilius, did you have something?
Yes, and that's something that we can bring to the January 21 public hearing, the revisions to the amended policy. We may tweak that language just a little bit. You know, when lawyers continue to look at language, they might find certain ways to maybe say it a little better. So we'll give it a review. Mr. Delaney will review it also, and we'll make sure that we're real comfortable with the language that comes back at the public hearing on all the suggested comments and revisions by all the board members.
And then my question about that, since it says at board request, assuming this policy revision got approved, if there was a book that I was concerned about how it had been reviewed, would I have to have that as an action item on the agenda to vote on requesting the re-review? That might be a question for Mr. Delaney.
That's what I would recommend, that it would be official action of the board to revisit a prior decision.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Delaney, so does that mean that we need to have an item on the list, or is that something she could ask at her comments, like, if she lets us know, I need to have the board say yes or no? So does that become an action item, like, on the agenda?
That would provide the most clarity.
Okay. So they can just let me know, we'll write up an item for it and bring it as a part of the board. Perfect, thanks.
Thank you for that clarification.
Well, it just helps me out.
Any other questions, concerns? Is there any community input? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the amended policy for advertising? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to action item two, the legislative platform, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell. As you know, the 2025 Florida Legislative Session will begin March 4 and is scheduled to end May 2. Ahead of the session, the Alachua County Legislative Delegation will be holding its annual legislative hearing on January 9 at 1 p.m. at Santa Fe College's main campus. Ms. Peck has requested a slot for Dr. Patton and Dr. Rockwell to address the delegation and present the district's legislative program. As you know, that program has mirrored the Florida School Boards Association Legislative Platform for the last two years. A few weeks ago, I did provide the board with a copy of FSBA's 2025 Legislative Platform. I hope this looks familiar to all of you. The superintendent recommends that the school board adopt the FSBA's platform as the Alachua County Public Schools 2025 Legislative Program.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the legislative platform? Moved by Ms. Sirdan. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. McNeely. Are there any board member comments?
I'd just like to say, Jackie, I also RSVP'd. I was gonna, I was gonna make that comment that I had responded to the email that we got also.
Oh, okay. Any community input? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Action item three is budget amendment number five, capital outlay, Mr. Remchuk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The superintendent recommends approval of budget amendment number five for the capital funds as presented.
Moved by Ms. Sirdan. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Ms. Abbott. Is there any discussion of this item? Mr. Vu.
Yes, I do have a few questions on it, mostly just kind of do with process on it and just, I gotta say, things I personally will admit I don't understand. So one item I see on here says idle wild portables, but it's 96 cents, and I'm just not sure if that's like, hey, we had like an invoice, we didn't pay this 96 cents, and now it's going on to here. It's P2204. I also had a few other questions on, I think, just how we spend money is, does reflect of our values, and in terms of how we communicate with the public and our teachers and our schools, these tend to be the only things that they get to see. I did bring some issues up with Dr. Patton earlier, and I just want to say it now to folks too. I've heard a lot about how it's been for our teachers at Eastside, and they don't feel very prioritized, and I do have some questions on just how we decide, what is that hierarchy? What is, becomes the priority when issues are raised when it comes to these types of issues? I've heard a lot of stories about things like humidity being so bad, that there's condensation on the walls, it's collapsed ceilings, it's flooded floors out at Eastside, that there's teachers who have been without AC in their classrooms for over a month, and they've had to relocate into different places that, you know, literally on their classrooms or they're moving around, we're asking front office staff to have AC that's infrequently working, and they're regularly working up to 90-degree temperatures. I had a teacher who has been tracking his room temperature every once in a while, you know, using data, and it reaches up to 98 degrees frequently. And so I was just curious about how we prioritize what we spend our limited funds on in this regard.
So I would say that what we'll do with that is that we'll bring back, when we get to that board orientation, and have a section on that to kind of say, here's how the money, the accounts, and how that priority gets set.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So since this was kind of came back because of a typo that was on there, I really didn't see the need for the amendment because it doesn't appear that there's any...
You are correct. There's not a change in the overall total of the budget amendment, it's a reallocation of the appropriations. And when we change between the functions, we're required to do a budget amendment. So yes, the overall total is zero, but the appropriations have changed.
Could you tell me where you put the functions? What page is that on? I see the project numbers are, is that what you call on the functions?
They haven't listed on appropriations. They don't have the function numbers, they have the function titles.
What, is that on the amendment that we have? Is it included in what we have?
If you look under, yes, it is on page two on appropriations, they have it listed in words and not numbers.
This is my page two.
It's the, I'm looking at the document online, I don't, it's the one that has the revenues, and then it has the appropriations.
That's page three in our copy.
Okay.
Oh, I see the changes there, yeah, okay. Thank you much.
Mr. Vu, you have another question?
Just on that too, a copy was sitting here for all of us, you know, as we came in. We also got a copy in our book, and I'm just wondering if there's actually anything materially different than what we had in our book to look over versus what was sitting for us waiting here today.
I did not hand out the copies in the book, so I don't know.
It was just an update, it, where it said five, there was a date listed, so in some spaces, there were dates instead of the number of the budget amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Are there any other questions from the board or comments from the community? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the budget amendment? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-1 with Ms. Sirdan in dissent. Moving on to action item four, employee case 202425303604, Dr. Atria.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for employee case 202425903604. The superintendent recommends that the school board terminate the employee effective December 11, 2024.
You've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
What was staff recommendation?
Do we, motion by Ms. Sirdan, do we have a second? Hearing none, this motion dies. Moving on to action item five, employee case 202425903607, Dr. Atria.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for employee case 202425903607. The superintendent recommends that the school board suspend the employee with pay for a period not to exceed 90 calendar days to continue thereafter without pay pending termination proceedings.
Do I have a motion to follow staff recommendation?
What was staff recommendation? I thought you were asking for a motion, so...
Yes, moved by Ms. Sirdan, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Abbott. Is there any community input? Or board input, Mr. Vu?
I do have a question. One thing that is concerning to me about this is that, in the documents presented to me, that this employee... in the documents presented to me, that this employee before this incident did ask for accommodation, did mention, and was open and honest about the stresses of the job and her own ability to continue doing it, and I would like to know what actions were taken on our part when we were informed of this. And to me, that is the biggest concerning issue in here.
I don't think we can discuss that. We're not able to discuss this.
So the answer to that is that's what would be an infringement on that employee's right to be discussing something along those lines, so maybe fill you in offline, but it's not something that we can share publicly.
Heard, but I've just understood there was something to share in that regard.
So in all transparency, I don't know the answer to that, so I don't want to make up an answer to that, but I would tell you that I believe the action can still move forward with that, because what I think needs to be done, I think was done appropriately, but certainly your vote.
All right, thank you, I just, thank you for the candor, I appreciate that.
Are there any other questions or comments? If anyone else had a question or comment?
I'm gonna have to have, the conversation I think is best I have with Dr. Patton, and all, this HR stuff is, we're getting into some really muddy areas here, and I think, I don't think the conversation should be had here, based on employee privacy and if there's appeals or whatever, but I do understand my colleagues were having, having concerns and questions, but my, I was asking the attorney what was the best way to go, so I'll get with you and, and Dr. Atrea afterwards.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. There's no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, one with Dr. McNeely and dissent. Moving on to Action Item Six, Employee Case 202-425-903614, Dr. Atrea.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for Employee Case 202-425-906, 9036, excuse me, 14, the superintendent recommends that the school board terminate the employee effective December 11th, 2024.
Staff recommendation?
Motion to move with staff recommendation from Ms. Sirdan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Abbott. Is there any discussion or community input? Mr. Foot, are you sure no one's on the line?
Nobody's on the line.
I just got a text from a citizen who said they're on the line.
Yeah, he came in, probably they were voting on the budget.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, I don't, the question I have, and I'm just saying this on date, because this is really concerning, and the date on this was March 9th, 2023, and today is June, I mean, December 10th, excuse me, December 10th, 2024, right? And we, I, I had the question of if the dates were right, and I was told it was, and I really just have one question, is who found this? Was it our internal auditor? Because this is really, this, this is enough right here to get you written up in an audit, by having employees, if they're not actively, you know, with us, but to still be on our payroll and all that, things like that, so that's really concerning that we have someone who did not report to work for that length of time, and it's just coming to the board, so.
So let me jump in on that one. So one, they didn't get paid this whole time, they only get paid when they're done with their leave days, sick days, or whatever. However, and again, trying to be as transparent as I can as a new person, I think one of the things that I've, and I want to again thank each one of you for spending your time with me independently, not together, allowing us to kind of share some of the things that we see where we have room for improvement. This would be an area that we have room for improvement, I've been talking with staff about creating standard operating procedures, and this would be an example. So that example, it shouldn't take that long for job amendments, it will write, this will be one that we'll write, is a standard operating procedure, and get with our attorney to find out what is that length of time that's justified legally, and not arbitrarily in terms of how far and how long we can then begin the procedures of terminating an employee if they're not showing up for work.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Patton, for that, and I, well, I, I didn't think that they were being paid, but the fraud element of it is if you have an employee on your books, there is that potential for someone else to be writing the check for somebody, that is a true fraud case, trust me. That's why when folks leave, they want you getting them out of the system as quickly as possible, because you don't want them to have access to any of your software, being of, having an employee number on there, you can write a check too, so. But when I saw it, it was, I tried to ask this question last week when it was on the agenda, and I was really hoping it was a typo, so.
In that case, it wasn't.
Thank you, though, yes.
Mr. Vu.
And just to follow up on what Ms. Sirdan was saying, I won't repeat that, but something I would also like to know too, I did ask Dr. Patton, she is finding out the answer, but it is really concerning to me that we don't even know, as an organization, if this employee was still receiving benefits that everyone was paying for, and whether or not they were using benefits in the interim between, since the job abandonment and today. I'm also curious to see what efforts were made to reach out to this employee, to see if we did our own end of this duty to care to ensure that this employee was honestly still alive. And those are just the things that pop out to me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vu, do we have any callers for this item? All right, any members of the public in the audience? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries five zero, and we are on to our second citizen input, I believe we have a caller. All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Then on to board member and superintendent requests. Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to my colleagues, I wanted to, I'm gonna make the request to you for us to have this as a discussion item on our next agenda about us, our next steps and what we need to be doing as far as moving along the process for us doing the search. We've worked with FSBA in the past and all of that stuff, and I spoke with Andrea about us trying to, what do we need to do to kind of get this going, and on our end, so that we can get in their queue, so. I just wanted everyone to know, so that when you saw it next time on a future agenda, it wouldn't be any type of a surprise.
Thank you, Ms. Sirdan, Mr. Vu.
Just before I move on from that, I just do want to echo that, I would like to see that on the next board agenda as well, just to make a comment, I myself, and not against any one particular group, but I would like to see an RFP, just to see what our options are in terms of a superintendent search, just so we're doing due diligence, you know, on behalf of the public. And also, I did ask about this, you know, last week, and I was kind of picking up on something Ms. Sirdan said the meeting before that. I would, I know we are doing a board workshop that is more or less an orientation for us and for Superintendent Patton on just the different departments, for the school district, and presenting things to us, and how giving us the ability to ask questions. I just want to know if Dr. Patton would like to just talk about that a little bit, just so people are aware of what we're about to do.
Yeah, so in my time as the superintendent, was a big part for me to be sure that new board members had an orientation, and then also, that we also had a joint board orientation, so that we would discuss things beyond just our operational realm and curriculum realm. So I know that you're new, and, but what I wanted to do instead, just because I'm also new, and just people have been on the board at different times, different years, and some have had orientations, some have not, so in this case, what we'll do is we'll have on the 22nd, and a long day, but a productive day, so we'll tackle first the, the idea of a curriculum side with lots of topics, including accreditation and what we do there, but then also that whole operation side of transportation, food services, and it's not to be into the weeds, but just so that everybody's on the same page about what all the district really does, and then we'll move into a third phase of that, which would be Mr. Delaney and Mr. Spilius just kind of helping out, creating those, like just reviewing statutes, where, whose role is what. So ordinarily, I would do those two sides just with a new board member, not with the whole orientation, but I just think since I'm new, it's good for me to even hear what all we do, because there's still nuances, so very excited, and I want to thank all five of you for putting that on your calendar and going to spend that amount of time with us, I think it'd be very, I think, very beneficial to everyone, and then as a group, beneficial to us too. Thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate all your work you've done. I know I come up asking a lot of hard questions, but Dr. Patton, I've just been really impressed by how responsive you've been, and just how you have a critical eye toward how, always to make things better, and that's how I feel like things should always be, even if things are good, they can always be better, and just thank you for that. And just a few more things I do want to follow up on, and it just, kind of following up to and echoing, I'm a citizen that made public comment, especially when it comes to our board policies and the ones that don't comply with our federal laws or state laws, we really do need to do more to make sure that we are going through our board policies, even just in my own experience working in the district, I have come across board policies that don't match our laws, and so to me, that is a bit of a one-on-one that we need to make sure we're doing, so we don't have incidences like that again, to where we are violating people's rights, that is something that I feel like should be again, one-on-one for us. And I do want to press again that, I know we are doing something on the 22nd, I would like a separate workshop, and I know Ms. Sirdan had said that she would like to set out a schedule of just increased meetings and workshops, so we can do this work about strategic planning. When I think about the priorities of our district and the issues that we have concerning budget, and concerning our decreasing enrollments that are increasing at a higher rate, and then even then, our student achievement that is now lagging behind the state averages in almost every single category, a strategic plan is the only way that we can address all those concerns at once, and I do know that Dr. Patton has mentioned it's a priority for her too, but I would just, just like, an idea, doesn't have to happen now, when we come back, of when we can publicly start talking about that and presenting it to the public, because community engagement and their feedback is going to be incredibly important. Thank you.
And I know Dr. McNeely wants to say something, but Mr. Foot just motioned to me that the caller who's been trying to get through got back on, so I want to make sure we get that caller before.
Caller, please state your name, you have three minutes with the board.
Hello?
Go ahead with your comment, you have three minutes with the board.
Hello?
Go ahead with your comment, you have three minutes with the board.
I can't hear you, can you hear me?
The board can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead with your comment.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I wanted to, this is Armando Gundy Gomez, I wanted to take a few moments to piggyback off of attorney and Russia's comments earlier, from the comment, I think it was very interesting enough to hear her comments in respect to how names were being utilized, or when names are brought up to the day, and in light of the state and judicial decisions that were being made, and to have two attorneys in person tell me that they still couldn't be named, it's, it's very interesting that you have two very qualified attorneys, and Mr. Spilius and Mr. Delaney, and both of them being officers of the court, integrity is an important thing, and so when we have legal decisions that are being made from courts, when it's around these decisions and telling people that names can't be used, that's not exactly true, and then we're trying to stifle people's First Amendment rights or being able to redress or have a redress of grievances with government, and it's even more disconcerting when you have a member of the school board giving the kill sign, like you see in the NFL, after the celebration of a touchdown, saying to cut the line, or kill the line, that's not even, I don't know what kind of public service, but we're supposed to have some dedicated, and I remember when we heard people saying they're going to be dedicated to serving this term, if that's dedication to killing and stifling debate, that's interesting. The other thing I wanted to say, Madam Chair, is you have a lot, you have a new board member, and you have some that have been there, it is, respect is an interesting thing. I, I don't find it believable when one of your colleagues up there, who normally has no problem enunciating every vowel and syllable in the lexicon, has a problem saying the new board member's name. His name is number Vu, it's not Vu, Shu, Yu, his name is Vu. And so to play those kind of games, when you're dedicated and you're serving, is not believable. And we know that that member does not have cognitive dissonance, so there's not a problem. And it's not a problem, it shouldn't be a problem saying, Mrs. Jarmcheck, her name is Mrs. Jarmcheck. You say Ms. Sirdan's name no problem, you say Dr. Rockwell's name no problem, why are we playing these kind of games? I hope we can go with a new attitude and a new year, and stop playing these disingenuous games, and it is a game. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gundy Gomez. Dr. McNeely.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to colleague Vu, I am so glad that you brought up the strategic planning, and sharing with Dr. Patton with my visit on Monday. Is it my mic? Oh, it's yours, okay. I'll try it again. One, one of the things, two of the things, or three of the things that I brought up, hopefully that at the orientation that she's going to deliver, not only will the strategic planning be there, the search for the superintendent, as well as rezoning, those were some issues that were delayed for whatever reasons, but I have asked that those three be placed on the agenda for our day-long orientation, so I wanted that to be presented. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Ms. Abbott, do you have anything?
I concur about strategic planning and the superintendent search and the rezoning needing to be discussed. I think the strategic planning and rezoning can wait for the workshop, but I, I concur with Ms. Sirdan that discussing the search, we can add that as a discussion item to the, to the next agenda. I also concur with Mr. Vu, I would like to at least discuss at that time, not just FSBA, but also the RFP process as a possibility. Mr. Delaney?
If I may, and if all the board members have had an opportunity to weigh in, I just wanted to, try to back up all the way.
the only other piece that we need to consider is that Alachua County works with an outside organization, Neola, like I think at least half the districts in Florida do, to get their policies. Neola was aware of that court case, they are working on revisions, I have actually been in contact with the folks at that company. actually been in contact with the folks at that company. So they can, it's my understanding, in the coming days or weeks are going to be bringing forth a policy revision that will incorporate this brand-new finalized decision from the 11th Circuit. So there is an ongoing effort by this district to stay in compliance with the law. There has been a moving target in terms of this case working its way through the court system. But I, we are very dedicated to protecting everyone's First Amendment rights, and we want to respect the public's ability to participate in these meetings.
Thank you so much, Mr. Delaney. I'm gonna just briefly summarize that, because the microphone was misbehaving. The court case that our citizen Ms. Rush referenced against Broward County, who uses a similar Neola policy to ours regarding public input, was the, was brought to a local court that found in favor of Broward County. It was then brought to the 11th Circuit Court, and they made a preliminary decision on October 10th that some elements of that policy did violate citizens' First Amendment rights, but that decision was not finalized until Friday, when Broward County School District's motion for a rehearing was denied. So that decision has only been finalized since Friday. Our, the company that we work with for our policies, Neola, is currently working on those policy revisions to be in compliant with the final decision of the 11th Circuit, and we should have that very shortly. Is all of that accurate, Mr. Delaney?
Yes, ma'am. It was Brevard County.
Oh, Brevard, sorry. Brevard County. All right. Mr. Vu.
Just thank you, Attorney Delaney, for that clarification on that. I do feel that there are more policies, other than just that, that are questionable, in my opinion, some of them having to do with delegation authority of legislative bodies, and how specific it needs to be. And there's just a lot of examples of that. And so just in general, I don't want people to think like we're only talking about one policy here. In my opinion, we're talking about possibly many in our policy book. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vu. Any other board member requests? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned at 7:30 PM.